Verse four, I don't know who's next to me.
I think I'm next.
Okay.
For in one place it speaks about the seventh day as follows, and God rested on the seventh day from all his works. And again, in this place, it says, "They shall not enter my rest, since therefore it remains open for some to enter it, and those who formerly received the good news failed to enter because of disobedience." Again, he sets a certain day, today, same through David much later, and the words already quoted. Today, if you hear his voice, do not harden your hearts. Verse eight.
For if Joshua had given them rest, God would not speak later about another day. So then, a Sabbath rest still remains for the people of God. For those who enter God's rest also cease from their labors as God did from his. Let us therefore make every effort to enter that rest so that no one may fall through such disobedience as theirs.
Twelve?
Nope, oh, twelve, yep. Indeed, the word of God is living and active, sharper than any two-edged sword, piercing until it divides soul from spirit, joints from marrow. It is able to judge the thoughts and intentions of the heart. And before him, no creature is hidden, but all are naked and laid bare to the eyes of the one to whom we must render an account.
All right.
Then, oh, that's it.
That's good. That's where Gary.
Yes.
Gary. Yeah. Good, thank you. So, as we hear the scripture, as we've read together, so what captures our imagination? What shares our curiosity?
I'm a little curious about the word today. I guess he's just trying to emphasize that what you must do is now.
Ah.
Wait.
I think that's a great instinct.
I don't know the meaning of today in the Greek that might enlighten us a little bit on that.
No, but I think your intuition is excellent there, Bill. Right, so there's an emphasis about an immediacy. Don't let it wait. You're right. Yeah, what else? What else are we hearing?
And that word today keeps coming up.
Yeah.
Come up three times, today, if you hear his voice, today. So it's just emphasizing that immediacy.
Right. But also, in that, Robin, is there's a telescoping in... So, part of what the writer of Hebrews is saying is it's not just then, it's also for us. So like, so we're supposed to hear just as much for them. It's meant to hear, so like, there's this telescoping or compartment, like mashed together of time, right? Like...
So it's their today, but it's our today as well.
Yeah, oh, excellent.
Yes, yes. I picked up on today as, even though that happened then, it's what's going on around us now. And it almost mirrors what's happening to us in terms of, we're in the wilderness and we're trying to find our way. And right now, our leader is up on the mountain, and we're just all in turmoil, trying to decide, what do we do next? Do we rebel, or do we wait for him to come down and guide us?
Yes, Gary.
And I'm thinking too, it's like what Carrie was saying about how God's time is not linear. Because in God's time, it's always today.
Yeah.
Yes.
There is no other time but today.
Yeah.
Great insights, I love it. I love it. What else? What else are you hearing?
I'm hearing the expansion of the word rest as from the original psalm.
Yeah.
I got this from footnotes, and this isn't just me, but they're trying, the author's trying to expand the rest that they were talking about in the psalm, in the original psalm, as being in Canaan. They're talking about the rest of the Sabbath.
Yeah.
And that having a rest of the Sabbath seems to be profoundly connected to the practice of Christianity, according to what this author seems to be saying.
All right, so Bill, your connection kind of got jumbled. So just say that last phrase about...
I fumbled a little bit too. I was saying that expanding the rest of Canaan to include the rest of the Sabbath shows how important the rest of the Sabbath is to this author's
Yes.
Excellent.
feeling of Judaism and Christianity.
Right.
And in my observation, Christians don't seem to observe the Sabbath as anywhere near as well as Jews do.
Yes.
We can learn a lot from them.
Yeah. Thank you. Very cool.
And if we think about who the original audience is, right? Who did we say we thought the original audience was?
The original audience of the Psalms?
Of this...
Of this, of the Hebrews.
The Hebrews, the Israelites.
Well, remember, it's not just Jews. There's something very specific about this group of individuals that they're calling Hebrews.
They are the early Christians?
Yeah.
And they may have been, what do you think their formation and upbringing may have been?
Jewish. Yeah, they were raised as Jews.
Right, right. So they may be hearing cultural references that we miss, right? So this understanding of finding rest may have conjured up images of Canaan and the Holy Land and the promised land of milk and honey, but it's geographic, right? Now they're living in an oppressed empire. And something else that's coming up when they hear heavenly rest or God's rest after God was finished creating was this Sabbath rest, right? Which doesn't have anything to do with geography.
Which, I think, and I think that, one of the things I wanted to point out to you all is about, because I know in the translation that we hear about rest, but it's really about Sabbath. And so one of the great things, and I appreciate Bill bringing up how we can learn from our Jewish neighbors. So that the power of Sabbath is not about rest. It's a whole theological and spiritual notion about stopping. And the stopping allows us, first and foremost, to know God and be with God, but also be together. And so, so this call that we're offered to be in God's rest and that some didn't know God's rest, it's not just about that they didn't know how to like, have a nap. It's that they were not realizing what it meant to be and to set yourselves into God's presence or into the presence of community together. And we're offered that opportunity together is now we know, but we should claim the chance to be in the presence of God, in the presence with each other. And so I think that, so that the words rest or Sabbath, we can easily like, we can diminish it. But there's theologically, in Hebrews theology, like, it's a bigger notion to know of what Sabbath means. It's not just like, I stop. It's really, I stop being and having my own stuff, but I put myself in God's presence and allow God to be God. And I start to like, put myself into community in a very different way. Which is why our neighbors that are Jewish, you know, you take a Sabbath stroll because you put yourself back into relationship as a family. That you go to synagogue because you put yourself back in a relation with God. And so, the writer in Hebrews is trying to pull us back like, the rest that we're offered is really, it's not just, I get it, it's not a nap. Right, it's, I'm gonna put myself back into righteousness with God in community. And we're all being offered that. And maybe they missed it in the wilderness. And maybe even, because we might feel we're in the wilderness, we need to make sure that we don't get left in the wilderness. So I like, and I love like, that Carrie bringing up that kind of arc of God's word and presences is, and it's Gary brought up, like, in Touch One, like, we are still in wilderness periods. And so how do we make sure that we don't, that we hear it, while also we don't get stuck in it? Right? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, Joanne shaking her head, yes, I may...
Sabbath is like a stopping in order to be restored.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's not just stopping, but it's in order to be restored. Reset, re-put in a God, rebet, to stop producing so we get in touch with the main producer.
Yeah.
And Joanne, I think that is actually one of the greatest insights about Sabbath is like, that we start thinking that we need to make things.
Right.
But that God is the creator of all.
We receive, yeah, we receive.
Yes, yes. Awesome, I love it.
Well, and then that makes me think about the concept of Jubilee.
Yes.
Right? Joanne, you may be able to speak to this more eloquently than I can. Can you explain Jubilee for us?
Well, the Jubilee is the fifth, it's every seven days. Every seven years is the sabbatical, when people take a leave. And then the Jubilee year is, I think, like, the forty-ninth or fiftieth year. That's the year, it's a whole year of Sabbath, where everything is put back, like prisoners are released, the lands are returned. Everything is returned to rightfulness, but in a grand way. In the whole society way. Debts are paid. Everything is restored back to original.
And there was something that I recall about tithing is different in those seventh years and Jubilee years. Tithing is not the same?
One of the greatest things that I think you're thinking about, Bill, is that debts, that debts and things that are owed are all like clean.
You're right.
Yeah. So that year, you don't have to tithe, is that what it is?
Well, and also, so like, it'd be like me turning the bank this year and being like, it's a Jubilee year, I don't need to pay back my mortgage.
Right.
Yeah.
Like, that's the notion of all debts are relinquished.
I would think so.
It would be actually that, not so much that I go to the bank and say, I don't have to pay my debt. It's the bank comes to me and says, your debt has been forgiven.
Yes.
So I'm thinking about like, these rent and mortgage issues that everyone is grappling with right now. Right? The Jubilee point of view would be for those who are owed to say, you owe me nothing now.
Exactly.
Right?
Yeah.
And I love this idea that Jubilee is returning, like, it's a restoration. Because what I'm hearing in this parochial p is that we can return to what, how it's supposed to be. Right? Today, return and choose to be how it is supposed to be. Yeah.
But let me restore you, we don't restore ourselves. We just show up to be restored. We don't do the restoration.
Excellent, Joanne. And I think, so one of the things in this part of the passage, one is, and I love that Carrie picked up on like, today, today it's real.
Right.
But also that, there's a nuance to how Moses and even Joshua didn't do enough. Right? So Moses, the great liberator, didn't bring all this to completion. But Jesus, and so, remember, so this part of Hebrews, it's telling us and reminding us about who and how Jesus is, and how we're partners with Jesus. But Jesus does more than Moses did. That Moses didn't do this. And so I think on one side, it's like, that's, that a part of what Hebrews is calling us to is like, it's setting ourselves above kind of the temporal and the physical leaders and other people that we have around us that we can see and hold so well. But also, historically, like, oh, we can hold up a lot of people that, oh, you know, fancy portraures of people that did such great things, but but we still have not been brought into the full rest and the full life with God. Right? But through Jesus, now it's happening. And it's not just happening like someone's doing it for us, but and that's the one phrase that I picked up when I read, it was like, that we are partners. And I think it's one of the great, like, of all the New Testament, like, this is one of, one places where that phrase part, and that word partners is used. I'm not sure if anyone else picked on that.
Yeah, from last time.
Right.
Three, from 3:1.
So it's Carrie the whole way through, like, that what God is doing and Jesus, that Jesus is coming with us, and that we're being incorporated into it. And maybe the other people that we've relied on haven't as much. And for me, that was very interesting.
It's a personal relationship with God. It's like God came down among us and ate with us, drank wine with us.
Right. It's not just some historical moment also, right?
Yeah.
Right. What else, what else did y'all hear? Anybody else? Other things?
In 4:3, God says, "Thou shalt not enter my rest. Though his works were finished at the foundations of the world," where in one place he speaks about the seventh day as follow, "And God rested on the seventh day from all his works." And again, in this place, he says, "They shall not enter my rest, since therefore it remains open for some to enter it. And those who formerly received the good news failed to enter because of disobedience." So, who actually entered into God's rest? Who did he allow to come in? I'm a little confused there.
Yeah, it sounds like, it sounds like he didn't let any of the wandering Jews come in at all.
Right. Because he was angered. You know, "As in my anger, I swore they shall not enter my rest." So it seems to me there was no forgiveness for what these people did. And maybe that's why he had them wandering for forty years to help die off the ones who were disobedient and have the newer generations obey him. And he allowed them to come into his rest.
I think that's a great start, Gary. I think that the important thing is, remember that that word rest, it's really Sabbath. So that they, so they were not allowed to enter into Sabbath, which Sabbath means intimate connection, stopping, nothing else except being with me. You know, I think the one struggle is, that we can always have is, no. Is it because they're being punished, or they just weren't getting it? Right, I mean, I think that, and I think it's one of the challenges, especially we're hearing about...
Forty years, and my thought would be that it was because they weren't getting it for forty years. Therefore, he didn't let them into his rest. Not that he punished them for forty years because he decided it was gonna be forty years.
Or it's the natural consequences of their choices.
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, I look at forty years as being two generations that would have passed before he allowed them to enter into their rest. So those at the start of the journey were no longer there as they crossed over the finish line, if you want to call it that.
Yeah. I, it makes me think, so when when we lived in Hawaii, and I was the rector of a parish, and you know, they gave me the keys to the buildings and everything, and so the first Monday that I had to show up on my own to like, open up, like, open the office. And I stuck the key in that they gave me, and I turned it, and I jiggled it, and it just, it wouldn't work. And I remember calling the senior warder myself, and I'd be like, the key doesn't work. And he's like, what do you mean it doesn't work, Father Bill? I was like, it just doesn't work. He's like, does it fit? I'm like, of course it fits, but it just doesn't open the door. And he's like, try squeezing the key. Have you ever heard, like, sometimes, like, when you're trying to put a key in, like, and I don't know why, I don't know the physics of it, but he's like, just squeeze the key. And I remember like, I remember taking a breath, like squeezing the key, and then, and then all of a sudden, I like, click, and the lock unlocks. And it's somehow like, I was not, I was not attentive or obedient or present enough. And I don't know, maybe it was like some Zen crazy thing that Myron is trying to make me do. He's the Kree grasshopper, but like, when I did that, it changed the tension on the whole mechanism, and then the door opened. But I think, so I think to your point, like, it's not like God's like, you know, you're done, Israelites, but as Bill's saying, like, they're missing what's being made present and offered. And a part of, a part of what Hebrews is calling us all to is for their lives also be a testament about how we're called to still have an opportunity in our lives, right? So the today for them is still our today now.
Yeah.
Sorry, that was my one moment with Uncle Myron. What else, what else did y'all hear?
I'm looking at the wording, piercing until it divides soul from spirit. Joanne's from marrow, I'm not quite sure what he's saying there.
Where is that, Bill?
This is 4:12. The end of 4:12.
So verse 12 says, "Indeed, the word of God is living and active, sharper than any two-edged sword, piercing until it divides soul from spirit, joints from marrow. It is able to judge the thoughts and intentions of the heart."
Oh, he's just talking about getting inside every...
Yeah, so what do you think? That's a fantastic verse to think about.
Yeah.
Think about the very first thing we hear, right, is a quote. It's an offset quote from someplace else, right? The author is quoting something, and starts off by saying...
Quote from what?
Say again.
It's a quote from what? That's what he said.
Do y'all know what the quote is from? The quote is from Psalm 95.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Right? And the very first line talks about who?
Holy Spirit.
The Holy Spirit, right? And then here we are at the end of this parochial p. And tell me about what's, living and active, sharper than any two-edged sword is describing what?
The word of God.
The word of God. Now, when you think about the word of God, what do you think of?
Scripture.
Scripture, yeah.
The prophets and Jesus.
Right, scripture and prophets and Jesus in our story, right? Who else think of the word of God in terms of the story and scripture?
I think of the word of God as in his commandments to us.
Yes.
Because that was, in essence, his first way of saying, this is who I am, and this is what I want my children to do in order to be my children. You follow these, and I will protect you.
Which makes me think about the Gospel of John. What do we hear in the Gospel of John about the word?
In the beginning was the word, and the word was God.
Yes. Or the foundations of creation, right? And what do our Jewish neighbors think about the word?
Oh, the Torah, the Torah.
Yeah.
Torah is the word.
Yeah.
And the word gives life, right? And the Torah speaks to us kind of the way that we understand the Holy Spirit to speak to us. So what does the Torah, the word, the Holy Spirit, wisdom, Sophia, what does, what does that say to us or do for us as Christians?
That's like the voice of God. That's, that whatever those things are, is saying what we need to hear from this formless Creator. It's more specific forms, hearable teachings.
Yeah, we hear...
It's distilled, it's a distillation of...
Maybe down into the very marrow of our being?
If we allow it, if we make room. That's the Sabbath. We have to do our part and show up and be open and receptive. Otherwise, it just goes off.
Right. And sometimes what Sophia says to me does not feel good.
Hardly ever.
I didn't hear that, it went out on my reception.
Sometimes what Sophia says to me doesn't feel very good. Sometimes what the Holy Spirit, wisdom, the word, what is being said to me can pierce me like a two-edged sword and divides my soul from my spirit, joints from my marrow, and can like, judge me and discern the very moaning and groaning of my heart.
I love that imagery of the two-edged sword, and I know, Bill, you've talked about this one so well, the tearing of the curtain at the time of the crucifixion. That that action of tearing the two-edged sword, that's the only way the message gets in.
Yeah. Yeah, I hear you, Joanne. I know for me, when I was reading that verse this week, another side of the cutting is also a cauterizing. Right, you know, when something cauterized, like, in terms of medicine, like, it's like a wound is cauterized, it's sealed up. Cauterize between two things in flesh, and so that they get, become separated. And so on one side, it's like, what we're hearing is that the word of God is living and active, and it separates things. And so what we think is life is maybe not life, but it's separating us back into what is life, which is kind of pulling us back to this, this whole notion of rest and Sabbath with life being brought back to God is, this is what real life is. And we can live in a fantasy and a delusion around us. Whereas we really need the Holy Spirit, the word of God, to be a cauterizing, two-edged sword that goes up and down and just separates. So we can finally get back to, and I love that, like, the, back to the intention... back to the intention, thoughts and intentions of the heart. Like there is, there is a resetting and reclaiming back, which is also the notion of Sabbath. Whenever we can get Sabbath, the rest that, that the letter of Hebrews is invoking is also, it's always that resetting back to life with God. And so I think that, and this is why like Hebrews is the letter that we never want to read because it's just so thick and full. But that, like, that's how much is coming out and all, just these few verses we've read. It's, it's invoking the wilderness for the Hebrews. It's invoking the covenant with God. Calling us back to covenant in the Sabbath and the garden. And, and cauterizing, cauterizing, cutting us off from the, the brokenness of life. Just know that we're still part of it. Like, like it's, it's, it's always thick and it's awesome to me. Right? But I think for me, that's the, and, and I love like, because Bill didn't bring it up, but verse 13, and before him, no creature is hidden, but all are naked and laid bare. Like, like there's invocation back to, we're all getting reset back. Cause in the garden, they were naked until they realized they weren't. Right? Like, we're all getting set back to like the fullness of life and, and, and Christ is the only one that's able to really set us back in that way. And it's, it's crazy amazing that God would do that. What else? What else are you all hearing?
That's really the whole, the whole idea of prayer is returning. What is, we're always, that's our day. We're always in the process of coming back to the center. As what, whatever our prayer is, if it's meditation or whatever. Because as from the garden, we tend to separate without even realizing it. We just get far from, we get caught up in other things so that if we're aware, we, we're, we always have to intentionally be returned. It's like this kind of movement all the time.
Right. And what is, what is the, one of the old colleagues like that? That in rest and returning, we shall be saved?
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah. I think it's in, it's either in Isaiah.
Yeah.
Returning and rest, we shall be saved. And then there's another little part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And prayer is returning, returning.
Now, now, one of the things that I, I, I've been sitting on this week and as I've been reading, because I, and I love that they all picked up on, because I picked up on this notion of, I kept hearing this like today. So there is this, this altering of temporality that we're, that we're supposed to find in the present right now and not let it wait. So, and I, and I love that. And I appreciate that. Like our faith is never meant to be waiting. But in this whole imagery of rest and in Sabbath, that, that, that this part of Hebrews we're hearing is that, that, that we're constantly being called back to be in place in, in relation with God. And it's not to be something like, some like frou, frou, like sometimes set off. But today, right now, we're supposed to set ourselves back with God and through Christ that, that becomes available and possible. And the, the challenge in that, I think, is, is to not allow to be just this, a spiritual kind of passing notion. But to really ask myself like today, like, how is, how is today a means by which I am entering back into returning the rest, but also then the pouring forth of which God is doing? Cause that's the reality of what Sabbath does. It's not just like come in, I can just like chill with Jesus. It's not like, you know, Netflix and chill. It's not like with Jesus. I'm actually Sabbath, it's, it's, it's a flywheel and, 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 and it's an energizing reality. And so to be brought back into the rest is not to say like, oh, but then it pours forth out. It's kind of like, I cheer like you, it comes in and goes forth. Like Gary, you know this from, you know, I did stuff with Mason. No, but, but that, that gathering forth an energy that we might know in our different practices, but that Christ offers, opens a way that we are drawn forth today to know it, to be drawn into it. And then it's supposed to pour forth.
Yeah.
Right?
There's always an in order to. We rest in order to.
Right.
Be holy partners.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's like we're renewing our, and every time we go, go back to God like that.
Right. Or just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna remind you all that in, in, as we read the epistles. In the Greek, prepositions are actually really powerful. So in verse three, seven, that we started with, the therefore, whenever you hear therefore in the epistles, like that is like this like grandstanding, you know, like statement, like, because everything else, therefore, like, it's a powerful moment. It's like we're, we're being called into a powerful moment from what we've talked about in the past couple of weeks, about who Christ was above the angels and then let himself for a little time to come below the angels. And therefore, this is all that we've been, be called to be a part of.
Can I make a comment on that?
That's totally, of course you can make a comment.
So the very last verse then is calling us to our therefore. Right?
Nice.
Laid bare to the eyes of the one to whom we must render an account, right? The word is living and active and judges our thoughts and is discerning of our hearts. So what's going to be our word in response? Right? What's going to be our therefore?
I just reminded me, oh, go ahead, Gary.
I think, Harry, that in, in three, 12, it takes into account that we are responsible for each other. So that's our therefore. Uh, it says, take care, brothers and sisters, that not, that none of you may have an evil, unbelieving heart that turns away from the living God. So that's it. And, but exhort one another every day. In other words, be accountable to each other.
Yeah.
So that we don't turn away from Him. If you see one of our brothers or sisters going astray, it's our responsibility to pull them back in.
Yes. Wasn't it Mother Teresa who said that, you know, when things get hard, it's because, it's because we've forgotten that we belong to each other?
Yes. Yes, absolutely.
Well, and, and, and the notion of we actually never live in independence, but we always live in interdependence. Like no matter what, my life is connected and relies on your life and Carrie's life and Joanne's life and Bill's life and Robin's life. Like we, we are interdependent no matter what. So you're gonna say something?
Oh, I was just gonna say, I was reminded of the expression cogito ergo sum. I think therefore I am, which I think is originally a Greek expression. The word ergo is therefore in Latin.
But I, but I think that, that, so we, when we think of that phrase, sometimes we think about a cognitive action of, of individual kind of expression. But the reality is, is that that phrase is actually caught up and it's set within a self-actualization. I think therefore I am. And so here is care brought up with the Holy Spirit, this holy wisdom and inspiration that, that if, if we are drawn into the word of God, the thought and the imagination of God, that that becomes therefore we are, right? So I think to turn that phrase, and I'm not good at Latin, but it, it's not just, I think therefore I am, it's that, that, that we hear and therefore we become. Like that this path is setting us like the notion of knowing and, and being a part of the mind of God, thinking like God, that Jesus shows us, is that we, we are set in a different way together. That, that we be, that we be different. Which then becomes really bad grammar. Sorry.
What do you think, Robin?
I'm caught up in this image of a, a two-edged sword. Sharper than any two-edged sword, piercing until it divides soul from spirit, joints from marrow. And with any knife that's that sharp, well, I think, I think it hurts us because we're doing the wrong thing. We're doing the wrong thing. But any, any knife that, that cuts that, that deeply, that sharply, you have two choices. It can either bleed out, you know, and you die. Or it will, it'll clot or you cauterize it. And then the bleeding stops. And I think that's where the hope is. You can start to heal once that bleeding stops. And that's, that's where the hope is. If that makes sense, it's just.
Yeah, definitely.
Yes. This is reminding me of when Jesus says, I have come to cause division, to separate parents from children, brothers from sisters. It's like not what we, it's one of those disturbing uh, talks of his, because we, we don't expect him to talk like that. But that's what this is reminding me of, the kind of division is some things have to be separated before God can enter. Otherwise it's too tight, maybe.
Well, I'm also thinking about what you're saying, Robin, is it's more like a surgeon's scalpel. Right? It's, it is traumatic to go through surgery. But if I have a tumor, I want it cut out. Right? Or if I need a hip replacement, right? Or a heart transplant. There is a lot of hope in that surgeon's scalp, scalpel. Yeah.
Yeah. I'm wondering about the actual image of, of a two-edged sword. Why, why a two-edged sword would be more deadly in battle, right? Than a one-edged sword is, I mean, I don't even know whether they had just one-edged swords. If they were fighting a war, wouldn't they have two-edged swords?
I, I think, I think that's a great question. So I think I can, or any, any, any of us can, can have some notions about two-edged swords. I know Carrie was, had some thoughts because there's some allusions in Isaiah that she's trying to find.
Well, I, I think that this, I think that the writer of Hebrews might actually be quoting Isaiah with these metaphors. I'm just looking it up. Ah, so the, one of the quotes is from Isaiah 49. And this is, I have the message, which is a modern interpretation, so it may get lost a little bit. But it's 49, two. And is he gave me speech that would cut and penetrate. He gave me speech that would cut and penetrate. And then Isaiah 55, 11. Fifty-five, eleven. It's lost in my interpretation.
Transition.
Our translation, sorry.
Does anybody have a Isaiah fifty-five, 11?
Yeah, it doesn't say, it so shall my word be that goes out from my mouth.
Quickly.
So shall my word be that goes out from my mouth and shall not return to me.
Oh.
Yeah. So maybe it's that idea that my tongue, right, tongue can be a two-edged sword, may. Y'all there? Sorry.
Hi Gary, hi Gary.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Yeah, I was disconnected for a while.
No.
I see Gary. I see Robin.
Okay.
Bill was fading out.
All right. So, 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 so we're hearing from Isaiah, the, in that allusion.
I'm not hearing anything.
Yeah.
No.
We lost them.
Y'all there?
Yes.
Yeah.
We don't see you though.
All right. So verse, chapter four, verse 12. So Carrie's pointing out that the, the word of God living and active really pulls from Isaiah 55, 11. But, and then the two-edged sword image pulls from Isaiah 49, two. You know, which may not answer your question, Bill.
They're gone.
They're gone.
They're gone.
Oh, there they are.
Sorry, the, the internet keeps flipping out on us.
Yeah, it's been like that all day.
So I, I, I think to your point, Bill, I, I mean, the, the phrase in, in four, 12 pulls out from Isaiah and there is some familiarity. But, but, but why a two-edged sword? I think on one side is a one-edged sword is actually like a big butcher instrument, right?
Or could be saber.
Yeah.
Right? It just, you're just gonna
chop.
Chop hard and fast. A two-edged sword is something that, that's, that it's a more refined instrument. And I did, I know it doesn't sound that way. And so, so, so in that respect though, I, I think as we hear those verses is that is the nature of the word of God is it's, it's very, very precise and cutting. And, and so if you even think about cutting and splitting soul from spirit, joints from marrow. And judge the thoughts and intentions of the heart, that, that it's not just some bludgeon or a big axe. Like it's something that's very, very sharp and precise.
Precise.
And and, and, and which means that that's how intimate it is. I, I think that's the other side is because this is all couchers and Christ who has come and been several angels with us to make us partners. And so His presence is something that's going to become and be this, this intimate and this close. Right?
And precise and precise.
Yeah, it, it, it reminds me of today's laser knives, which actually cut and seal at the. Yeah, it, it, it reminds me of today's laser knives, which actually cut and seal at the same time.
I missed some of that.
It's purposeful.
Yeah, exactly.
Ah, it's purposeful too. That's another point too. Yeah.
Yes, please, God, let your spirit be like a laser with laser sharp focus. Yeah.
Which then, because it could be easy to hear that verse and it'd be like, this, this is crappy for God to cut, God's word to cut like that. But the flip side is like, if it's that precise, then, then what? Then what needs to be cut away will be cut away, but what doesn't need to be cut away will not be lost. And I think that's one of the things about, that we can oftentimes have as we engage our faith is that we are always worried about the loss that, you know, you know, our faith is so hard or what we have to take on. But the reality is, is that the loss is really not the loss that we think it is. That I don't need to lose life or, or, or love or family. But that the, the loss is going to be precise.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I see it as when He separates soul from spirit, He's actually separating the evil part of us with the spiritual part that will worship Him.
Where he separated, he exposed which has evil parts in it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's great.
I like, I like too that the, um, the two edged sword, that the, the move, the presence and movement in, in God. One of my things is that people always focus on the comforting part of the presence of God, but like, like that passage I was saying about, you know, when Jesus says, "I have come to tear, you know, families apart," is that just God's presence, God's action is often disturbing. It's disturbing. It disturbs the current peace so that we can, we're forced if we agree to go deeper. So God's not just a comforting presence, but a disturbing. You know, just when you think, oh, okay, yeah, this, you know, I'll pray twice. Yeah, this will work. This is okay. And then boom. There's, there's a disturbance. Something's not right. So then you, you have to, you're constantly being invited to go deeper, deeper, deeper. And that's disturbing and we resist. And that's the return, you know, that's the returning. We go, okay, okay, okay. I'll, I'll do it this time.
Right.
And then, and that's the day by day process.
So we realize why, why it's happening.
Yeah.
And then it doesn't hurt so much.
But sometimes we don't know that for a long time.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
And why does it take me so long?
Probably because you fight it.
Yes, which is why I need a laser to cut through my bullshit.
You needed two edged sword.
Yes.
See, I'm, I'm glad that I wasn't the one that cursed tonight. But I, but I think so, this is the power of, of reading or Hebrews.
Did you repeat that, Bill? I didn't hear that.
I said, I said, at least tonight I was not the one that cursed.
Okay, I thought that's, I thought that's what you were saying, but I couldn't tell for sure.
I, I know you're used to me dropping, you know, the BS bomb or the F-bomb anytime, Bill, on Wednesday Bible.
That's not tonight.
Yeah, so not tonight. But I, so I think the, the one important
BS word is not.
Is that, so we're reading Hebrews for the long haul. We're reading it in the midst of difficulty. And I think that we're hearing some nuances about why we need to hear. We're here, starting to hear about what God's doing, how God's present. But I think the other thing also is, is we're being called to see and be coaxed out of our comfort and our notions. And so what, when I brought up last week about resilience, is that to be resilient doesn't mean things and we stay where we are. It, it means that we're shaped and we live into the way that we've been made to be. And I think one of the things, the images I want to, we all think about is, you know, Carrie's from Texas and a part of Texas, they have cotton fields. And the cotton fields actually were never meant to be there. It's, people just said they wanted to grow cotton there. So they, they've, they figured a way to bring enough water and to make the stuff grow there. But the problem is that, that as soon as things change outside of those ideal conditions, then the cotton won't grow because it's not resilient. It's not made to be in that moment. Whereas we are made to be in our, in the moment where we are. And a part of hearing this from Hebrews is to be recalled back to, what does it mean to be the people of God and to be drawn into the life of God? As we heard on Sunday, life abundant. And that life abundant is one that's resilient. It's going to bounce back. But it also, to bounce back means that we don't forget who and how we are. And in a part of what we're hearing here is that, that, in, in a different image from, from Jesus's parables about the, the wheat and the chaff. That here, there's a separation of our spirit from the chaffness and the reality of the wheat of our, our lives. And we're gonna be, keep, we're gonna keep reading and need to hear about how Jesus keeps bringing us into that way and that presence. And He keeps creating the means by, and for which, and by which we can be a part of God's presence. And we can reclaim our, our real identity, our resilient identity. And I, and I want to ask you all to think about that as you read the next section. So chapter four, verses fourteen, and we're going to read through six, twenty, is to hear it not as some weird images of who and how Jesus, but how Jesus as His high priest is really meant to be this, this, this image and this resetting point for us to know who we are and how we are in our life, in our contact, in our connection with God. Because in the end, that's a part of the work of resilience is, is we know and we're reset and we have a founding in our own identities, in our own living. Right? Y'all with me?
Yes.
So I want to invite you all to read that and we'll, we'll chat back in. If you got questions this week, go ahead and email me. You can actually email Carrie. She probably has better answers than I do. But it's been a great conversation and I love that we can have this time.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Yes.
Great.
Thank you for showing up.
Yeah.
Thanks. Thank you for being there.
Awesome. So we'll see y'all next Wednesday.
Yep.
Yeah.
Have a good night, everyone.
All right. Good night.
Good night.
Good night. God bless.